Welcome everybody to the Marshall Public Schools Board of Education meeting on Monday, October 20th, 2025. Ian, what do you call the roll?
President Amanda Langford.
Here.
Vice President Shawna Gamble. Treasurer Matt Davis.
Delighted to be here.
Secretary Derek Allen.
Here.
Trustee Dr. Mark Mahalka. Trustee Jerry Underhill.
Here.
Trustee Dr. Lauren Brown.
Here. All right, we have a quorum. Now let's pause for a brief moment of silence. Okay, Lauren, will you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, now we're on to item number two. I would like to open the public hearing on modifying policy 5207, our anti-bullying under MCL 380.131B2. There are some green forms as you walked in the door. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to comment on modifying our anti-bullying policy? Seeing none, we will now close the public hearing. And now we are on to approval of the agenda.
I move approval of the agenda as presented.
Support.
All right, we have a motion by Matt, supported by Derek. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. All right, now we're on to item number five, public comment. Is there anybody here tonight that would like to comment on agenda items only? Again, there's a green form as you walked in the door. Agenda items only. Okay, moving right along. Let's go on to item number seven, consent agenda. We have special session minutes, business session minutes, we have dispersments, and new hires. I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved. Support.
We have a motion by Derek, supported by Jerry. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. All right, now I would entertain a motion to go into executive closed session under Section 8B of the Open Meetings Act in regards to disciplining student number 25-26-1.
So moved.
Support. We have a motion by Derek, supported by Lauren. Any discussion? This is a roll call vote, so Lauren?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Derek?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
And Amanda? Yes. Okay, now we're going into closed session, so...
Back in session, now we're on to action item number nine. Would anyone like to make a motion?
I move that we take no action on student discipline hearing 25-26-1.
All right, we have a motion.
So are you looking for just nothing to happen?
Yeah. I was like, oh, okay. Are we moving on? We have item number 10, special presentation. We have a building highlight on Harrington Elementary with our principal Beth Brunell.
All right, good evening. So I'm Beth Brunell, I'm the principal at Harrington. This is my second full year there. Last year when I came here, I talked to you guys about Capturing Kids' Hearts, a program that we were implementing in our school, and also self-managers. This year we've got a few other things that I'm going to talk to you about that we're adding on to that. So the first thing that we are really working on is having our kids go on field trips that are out of the city of Albion. And so the first year I was there, we were able to get the kids into the zoo, which was wonderful, do the big zoo lesson, which the other elementary schools had been doing. And then Harrington was not doing it for a while, so they went again this year. They had a great time. Where do I need to point it at? There we go, okay. So I'm sure many of you know about the big zoo lesson. The kids go and they spend a whole week there. They do different classroom activities, they go out and they visit the animals, they study an animal and journal about it, and just get to really explore and have hands-on experience at the zoo. So it was really wonderful to see our kids go there again. It's a great tradition for the Marshall kids, and I'm glad that Harrington can be part of it now. And there they are by the... I think that's a snow leopard yet. There we go. This year, my first grade teachers planned a field trip again out of Albion, and they went up to Charlotte, and they went to Country Mill Apple Orchard. They study different plants and pollination and life cycles and different things like that, so it went along with their science lesson. That jumps too fast, whoa. There we go. So the kids were very excited when they came back. They were telling me all about apples and what you can make with apples, and they got to have apple donuts and apple cider. They also got to go pick out pumpkins, and they went on a hayride as well. So again, just letting them experience different things than they normally would see in the city of Albion, and then also having hands-on learning with what goes along with their curriculum as well. So we do have some other field trips that are planned for this year. The big one is our fourth graders. We have just a small amount this year, but some of our fourth graders are going to be going on the Mackinac trip. And so we're very excited to get Harrington students back on that trip as well. So this year, along with Capturing Kids' Hearts, Capturing Kids' Hearts was really about giving students a voice, making them feel recognized and cared about the minute they walk into the building. We start each day going right into the gym. We meet together as a group, we kind of go over the day's schedule, and then each day a different group leads our mantra. And then we go into the classrooms where they're greeted by teachers, and then they do good things, where they talk about good things that have been happening. We have social contracts that they look at, and all the kids have signed. They talk about if there's anything that they needed to work on with the contract, or if there's anything else they should add, because a social contract is a living document for them. So this year we decided Zones of Regulation. It explores feelings and builds emotional awareness, recognize body signals related to our feelings, identify situations and trigger that impact our feelings, knowing that we're all in the zones at one time and that all zones are okay, but some zones are better for the learning environment. We explored a variety of regulation tools, and we paused to problem-solve before acting on our impulses. So Todd Hicks, our PE teacher, introduced the different zones to our kids and really helped them understand what it was, and then the classroom teachers took over the lessons from there to talk more about it. So Zones of Regulation really isn't about going from sad to angry, which some people think of, it's more your energy level. So we have this meter here where we start with blue is very low energy, green, we'll talk more about it, is kind of like your medium energy, and then we start to get to high-energy feelings. So we have, again, the blue, the green, the yellow, and the red, and you can see that each one of these zones, you know, blue goes from sad to bored to tired to even being sick. Our red zone, you can be overjoyed or elated, that's still very high energy when you feel that way. You can be panicked or angry or even terrified, and those would be high-energy feelings. So again, the blue zone is, we talked to the kids about possible body signals you might be feeling if you're in this zone. So you might have low-energy, feeling down, slow-moving, slow heartbeat, foggy thinking, and heavy muscles. We work with the kids on some tools that they can do to help them if they're in these zones, maybe just talking to somebody if they're having a really rough time. That's where Capturing Kids' Hearts is so important, because we have built those relationships with our students. They might need to, if they're tired, get up and stretch or take a walk. So those are just some tools that if they're in the blue zone. The green zone is the zone we want students to be in for learning. It's medium energy, they're comfortable body, steady heartbeat and breathing, focused learning and relaxed muscles. So if you are in the zone, this is a good person to help if you're not in this zone. So they can help another person reach the green zone. They can smile and just encourage others and show gratitude while they're in that zone and help other people find the green zone as well. The yellow zone, this is where we start to get a little bit higher energy, students who have the wiggles. They might, you know, have faster heartbeat, faster thinking, intense muscles that go along with it as well. So with this one, we take some deep breaths, we take a break maybe, we practice some mindfulness. We can talk about like the grounding exercises and different things like that that we can do when we start to feel ourselves in that yellow zone. And then our last zone that we have is the red zone, which again, this is the highest energy, hot, sweating, pounding heart, racing thoughts, and powerful muscles. And so we talk to the kids about this, we use these languages.
Back in session. Now we're on to action item number nine. Would anyone like to make a motion?
I move that we take no action on student discipline hearing twenty-five dash twenty-six dash one.
Support. All right, we have a motion.
So are you looking for just nothing to happen?
Yeah.
Sorry. I withdraw my motion.
I was like, oh, okay. Are we moving on? We have item number ten, special presentation. We have a building highlight on Harrington Elementary with our principal Beth Brunell.
All right, good evening. So I'm Beth Brunell. I'm the principal at Harrington. This is my second full year there. Last year when I came here, I talked to you guys about Capturing Kids' Hearts, a program that we were implementing in our school, and also self-managers. This year we've got a few other things that I'm gonna talk to you about that we're adding on to that. So the first thing that we are really working on is having our kids go on field trips that are out of the city of Albion. And so the first year I was there, we were able to get the kids into the zoo, which was wonderful, do the big zoo lesson, which the other elementary schools had been doing. And then Harrington was not doing it for a while. So they went again this year. They had a great time. Where do I need to point it at? There we go, okay. So I'm sure many of you know about the big zoo lesson. The kids go and they spend a whole week there. They do different classroom activities. They go out and they visit the animals. They study an animal and journal about it, and just get to really explore and have hands-on experience at the zoo. So it was really wonderful to see our kids go there again. It's a great tradition for the Marshall kids, and I'm glad that Harrington can be part of it now. And there they are by the... I think that's a snow leopard yet. There we go. This year, my first grade teachers planned a field trip again out of Albion, and they went up to Charlotte, and they went to Country Mill Apple Orchard. They study different plants and pollination and life cycles and different things like that, so it went along with their science lesson. That jumps too fast, whoa. There we go. So the kids were very excited when they came back. They were telling me all about apples and what you can make with apples, and they got to have apple donuts and apple cider. They also got to go pick out pumpkins, and they went on a hayride as well. So again, just letting them experience different things than they normally would see in the city of Albion, and then also having hands-on learning with what goes along with their curriculum as well. So we do have some other field trips that are planned for this year. The big one is our fourth graders. We have just a small amount this year, but some of our fourth graders are gonna be going on the Mackinac trip. And so we're very excited to get Harrington students back on that trip as well. So this year, along with Capturing Kids' Hearts, Capturing Kids' Hearts was really about giving students a voice, making them feel recognized and cared about the minute they walk into the building. We start each day going right into the gym. We meet together as a group. We kinda go over the day's schedule. And then each day, a different group leads our mantra. And then we go into the classrooms where they're greeted by teachers, and then they do good things, where they talk about good things that have been happening. We have social contracts that they look at, and all the kids have signed. They talk about if there's anything that they needed to work on with the contract, or if there's anything else they should add, because a social contract is a living document for them. So this year, we decided Zones of Regulation. It explores feelings and builds emotional awareness, recognize body signals related to our feelings, identify situations and trigger that impact our feelings, knowing that we're all in the zones at one time and that all zones are okay, but some zones are better for the learning environment. We explored a variety of regulation tools, and we paused to problem-solve before acting on our impulses. So Todd Hicks, our PE teacher, introduced the different zones to our kids and really helped them understand what it was, and then the classroom teachers took over the lessons from there to talk more about it. So Zones of Regulation really isn't about going from sad to angry, which some people think of. It's more your energy level. So we have this meter here where we start with blue is very low energy. Green, we'll talk more about it, is kind of like your medium energy, and then we start to get to high-energy feelings. So we have, again, the blue, the green, the yellow, and the red, and you can see that each one of these zones, you know, blue goes from sad to bored to tired to even being sick. Our red zone, you can be overjoyed or elated. That's still very high energy when you feel that way. You can be panicked or angry or even terrified, and those would be high-energy feelings. So again, the blue zone is, we talk to the kids about possible body signals you might be feeling if you're in this zone. So you might have low energy, feeling down, slow-moving, slow heartbeat, foggy thinking, and heavy muscles. We work with the kids on some tools that they can do to help them if they're in these zones. Maybe just talking to somebody if they're having a really rough time. That's where Capturing Kids' Hearts is so important, because we have built those relationships with our students. They might need to, if they're tired, get up and stretch or take a walk. So those are just some tools that if they're in the blue zone. The green zone is the zone we want students to be in for learning. It's medium energy, their comfortable body, steady heartbeat and breathing, focused learning, and relaxed muscles. So if you are in this zone, this is a good person to help if you're not in this zone. So they can help another person reach the green zone. They can smile and just encourage others and show gratitude while they're in that zone and help other people find the green zone as well. The yellow zone, this is where we start to get a little bit higher energy. Students who have the wiggles, they might, you know, have faster heartbeat, faster thinking, intense muscles that go along with it as well. So with this one, we take some deep breaths. We take a break maybe. We practice some mindfulness. We can talk about like the grounding exercises and different things like that that we can do when we start to feel ourselves in that yellow zone. And then our last zone that we have is the red zone, which again, this is the highest energy. Hot, sweating, pounding heart, racing thoughts, and powerful muscles. And so we talk to the kids about this. We use these languages all the time. We were getting ready for our bus pickup, and our bussers come into the gym, and we had red-zone energy going on. It wasn't that anybody was angry or upset. They were just all really excited to be going home for the weekend. And so we just had to talk to them, we're in the red zone. You know, we need to try to find our way back to the green zone so that we can get on our buses. And they just talk about taking some deep breaths, count to one hundred. If you're really upset, you might need to ask for help. You might need to move away, or you might need to be able to take a break from somebody, and just help them work on stop what they're doing. So these are the different zones that we've been teaching the kids this year, really trying to help them learn how to regulate themselves, but also start to recognize what those feelings are like so they can start to notice when they're going from one zone to the next zone. And then also give them the tools to help them. You know, if you are in the red zone but you're in a learning environment, that's very difficult to be in that environment at the time. So what are some things that we can do to help you out, or what's some things that you can do to help yourself out? So that is my presentation, short and sweet. Do you have any questions about it? So we have, if I go back, in each room, oops, we have that posted, and we also have it out in the hallway as well. And we really do refer to it. You know, even the teachers have tried to use it in just saying, hey, I'm in this zone right now. And again, we want the kids to know, like, you're not, you're not in trouble. You're not a bad kid if you're in a red zone. It's just how your body's feeling at that moment, and what are some things you can do with that. But it is nice, just like Capturing Kids' Hearts, because every staff member was trained, including our parapros, which was wonderful to be able to have them get trained in it as well. So that common language that we can all use, just like the Capturing Kids' Hearts and the four questions we used with that. You know, we see kids and, you know, sometimes I can say, I can see you're in the red zone. Do you wanna talk, or do you need a moment? And so it's just recognizing where they're at and also trying to help them with their needs.
Any more questions for Beth? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now we're on to item number eleven, report of the superintendent.
I have three new hires. So Wyatt Morgan. Wyatt fills the position of Title One Paraprofessional at Harrington Elementary. Wyatt attended Ferris State University, where he earned a bachelor's degree with a major in digital media. Kristen Newby. Kristen fills the position of bus aide for the transportation department. Kristen is a graduate of Marshall High School. Emily Rupp. Emily fills the position of Special Education LRE Paraprofessional at Walters Elementary. Emily attended Michigan State University, where she earned a bachelor's degree with a major in environmental studies and sustainability. Welcome to our three new hires.
All right. Thank you. Let's move on to action item number twelve. This is the repeal of our current bullying policy under MCL 380 point thirteen ten B. I would entertain a motion. A motion by Mark, supported by Jerry. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Oppose say nay.
The changes were in the bold blue, right? That was it?
So right now, we're repealing. So we're removing our old one, and then we'll get to the new ordinance.
Oh, yes, got it, okay. Yes, I say aye.
Okay. We are all in favor. Okay, now we're on to action item number thirteen. This is the adoption of the Trune Anti-Bullying Policy fifty-two oh seven. I would entertain a motion.
Support.
We have a motion by Mark, is that Derek? Supported by Derek. Any discussion?
The changes are in the tealy blue color, right? That's the only changes?
So this is a brand-new policy based on all of our Trune policies.
Then what's, why is it highlighted? What's the highlighted part about? That's what threw me off.
It's just, it's just notes from Trune. As we went through all of the policies to change them, they noted some of the stuff for us to do. So it's just a note.
Different options, right?
So the, it's, the teal-blue is just the note. So do you have it pulled up? Or do you want me to read? Are you good?
No, it's here. I looked through it already. I was just, I was just like, what's the difference? Because I, what was the difference? I was just making the assumption that the blue was the only thing that was different.
Any other questions? All right, let's vote. All in favor say aye. Oppose say nay. All right, we are on to action item number fourteen, under student discipline. This is reinstatement of student twenty-four dash twenty-five dash two, as recommended by the reinstatement committee. I would entertain a motion.
So moved.
We have a motion by Derek, supported by Matt. And this is student discipline, so we're not going to discuss this. All in favor say aye. Oppose say nay. Okay. Now we're on to public comment. Is there anybody in the audience? We have one. You may address the board on anything. For three minutes.
Good evening, board. My name is Jerry Bischoff. This is Chase Bischoff. My other son, Colin, couldn't be here tonight. I was trying to get out here, oh, earlier in the school year and wasn't able to. Single-parent life keeps us kinda busy. I just wanted to bring to your attention something that was very special that two of your Walters students did. As a, as Walters has some, some special students, special friends that go to our school. And because of that unique opportunity that we have for our students, my two sons, as a EMT, my two sons decided to buy Carter kits, special needs autism kits, for everyone in Marshall Firefighters Amlets. And Marshall Credit Union came aboard and helped them with whatever money that they didn't raise. And because of that, they got special recognition from the governor, Lieutenant Governor, Sarah Leitner, for their special tribute to help our community. And I thought that was very special. Makes me choke up because, because that was a unique opportunity that two young boys, every year, first year they bought soccer nets for Walters, helped raise money for that. Second year was firefighting equipment that they raised for that, and then this year was autism kits. So it just shows that, that young kids can make a difference in our community by one thing at a time, you know? So these, these young men are, are there. I teach them that every new student, they need to take, take the time, every new student, be their friend for that day, take them, walk them around, you know, teach them, sit with them at table, you know, play with them, whatever, introduce them to everybody. That's the most important thing, because one time they were new at a school too, and everything. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention, that, you know, Ms. Heidrick and the staff there at Walters do an awesome job. You know, only recommendation I would be is get Ms. Rosie some more help in the kitchen, man. That's a tough job and stuff like that. So, so just thank you guys for everything you're doing. Got anything to say, Chase? I mean, a few words.
Looks like you're raising some kids with service hearts. I think that's great, man. Thank you, guys. Thank you very much.
Good job, Chase. All right, any other public comments? All right, seeing none, let's go to board member, future agenda item requests and comments for which no action may be taken at this meeting. Anything from our board? Meeting adjourned.